Time, it's Tuesday morning, it's a beautiful day. And we have just a lot ahead of us this morning. So, let's get this show on the road. I'll go with it. Lord, thank you for this beautiful morning, the break and the relief from the heat. It's very welcome. And we just enjoy all the seasons and we talk a lot about the weather, Lord. And but we're grateful in whatever shade or form. And sunny, or cloudy, or rainy, or cold, or snowy, Lord. We just know that we will enjoy the day because this is the day you've made. And we're to rejoice and be glad in it. So, Lord, we thank you for the blessings that you allows to enjoy. Something just as magnificent as the change in the weather, just from day to day and sometimes hour to hour. Lord, in Missouri, sometimes minute by minute. But we're grateful to be here this morning. We look forward to taking up the business that comes before us. And have a good discussion about the items on the agenda that we have to consider and take action on. And, Lord, as always, we lean not on our understanding, but look to you for wisdom and guidance as we serve our friends and neighbors here in McLean County. We love you, we thank you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll take up the approval of the minutes for August eighteenth. Make motion approved of minutes as bid for August eighteenth?
Motion second to approve August eighteenth minutes as presented.
Any further discussions? In all favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same time. Minutes approved. CD, C D applications, none this week. About how many do we have left? I haven't kept count, two or three or four, maybe? Just curious.
I will find out for you.
Okay, I'm just curious. All right?
Several.
Okay. Driveway call work application process. And we know we've been working on this for the last two or three weeks. And what I presented this morning is the, what I hope will be the final draft. And for those who might be listening or watching online, this is just a process that we are using to formalize essentially what's been done for many, many, many years here in McLean County. And it's established best practices so that, you know, from the commission to road and bridge to those landowners here, we all have a guideline that we can look to. And an application process that formalizes it, spells out our responsibilities, spells out what the landowner can expect and their responsibility as well. So, with that, I would ask you to look at that. Let's see if any questions that we may. Start using this.
I say we, I tell you, I'd make a motion, go ahead and accept this application as we have it.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve the driveway entrance application and guidelines. Any further discussion? No, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same time. Okay, so what we'll do is probably leave a master copy in your office because there's been them up there. And we'll make sure that Road and Bridge also has these on hand. And we'll.
I'd like to have a few of them as well.
Sure.
Please.
Okay. Okay. All right. I think that's the first step in kind of putting together our best practices made. And appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is health insurance discussion. And I think Linda wanted to bring information to us. And so, Linda, I'll give you the floor if you'd like to speak to our health insurance at this point.
Currently, what we have is actually, and it's just listed, there's many details, of course, within the whole book. But those are the highlight topics that people put out as we sail. Our total premium is eight twenty-two thirty-three, broke down by the major medical plan and the Anthem supplemental. Those two comprise that total. My question really is just to consider, are we going out for bid again this year? What do you guys feel about our premiums versus our risk reward? Our services benefit versus our premiums? And are we staying with the same broker? Because if we're not, then we do have to be in that process now to get a broker that would then bid for us, if that's the case. Or if we stay with the broker that we have, then they would then know to go out and look for bids for us also. They can do that, especially if we're staying with the same broker. They can go out and bid for us to see which one comes back in with a best bid. You know, he can offer, they can offer plans as they go out and search for them and bid them out on our group. The main point right now is are we staying with the broker that we currently have? Or are we going to go look for another one? Because that is the key process to be doing anything else down the trail.
When was the last time we had insurance out for bid?
We bid it.
We really?
Last year, kind of.
Yeah. Last year?
Last year.
So, one year.
It was with the same broker, but it was bid last year.
How long did it been with the same broker?
Three years. About three years.
Three?
Thank you. Within that, they have gone out and bid other networks, other plans within the networks. We've had six, we've had Health, yeah, Link and Mercy and Miracle. So, we've had all the major contributors bidding on major networks.
Pretty much every year, though, that broker has kind of went through year by year to see where he can best serve the county.
If we ask him to. And we did last year.
Has it really talked of what the increase might be for this next season?
So, we read a news article and it said ten percent to, for employers to look at. I also spoke with Nether County and they've seen a two percent. So, probably anything in between. The reason that we're having these monthly meetings currently is to provide within bidding world, the idea that the group is willing to hear how, as a whole, we can lessen the degree of risk because we're doing preventative things, because we're using our plan well, because we know how to use our plan well. That is the checkboxes that he is able to present as bidding to the current company, which is Anthem. And if we ask him to go out and bid to the future ones, he says, you know, this is a group that's willing to work with you. And it makes it maybe more favorable in that conversation. Our supplemental is, it's showing that people are using it as a benefit more than they used to. Reasoning for that, I'm not certain. But if it was ever wondered, is it really considered a benefit to our employees? It definitely is. That supplemental portion is us paying us and then we pay them. We have in the past years had some carryover, us paying us, saved us funds. This year, we're going to about break even. That being said, this is the same premium that we have charged us since the beginning, which is probably five years ago. We haven't raised that rate up for us. But if the trend is there next year, we don't need to. Because I think this year we're going to maybe outwash.
Well, I think I see more and more people going to the doctor than what used to. You know, that's kind of what I see, everything go from there. Not having the proper terminology and sounding too old school. And I won't comment what I just had in my mind to say there. But, but yeah, I see more and more people going to the doctor and hearing more of them going to the doctor than what used to, just over small things in terms of insurance, so.
The county has always been not a hundred percent by any chance, but has always trended towards an older group. Those who would stay for the security of a job, those who would stay for the consistency of a job, no way off worries so much. Those who would stay for the benefits of a job. So, that lends to those who are in a place where they like that as a benefit versus the ones who are okay with moving on to find the next something. So, we do tend to lean more on a bit of an older group, some more seasoned group. But that's not a hundred percent true because there are new ones around too.
Right. Yeah. And I think it's more, like you said, with that, the security of it, you know, knowing what you've got as far as, like you were saying, for more of a season and stuff like that. But I think there's a few of the younger ones and stuff that are starting to see that through some of their others, the elder crowd, that how well that works if you can just stay hooked, you know? There's a few of them starting to learn that right now. So, and I think we've got a few younger ones for us in multiple areas throughout the county that are going to break out.
Uh huh, agreed.
I'm not that much, no, I'm not very knowledgeable about a lot of the insurance stuff, as others may be, so.
I'm not that other either.
As far as qualifying, we are okay. We have bid out last year and we can bid again this year. So, it's not because of, we're at the end of a three-year term, we have to bid out. That's not aware of.
Right, that's why I was asking, so.
But it is something to look at, to be aware of, that we can. And if there's any reason to want to, we can.
Better, again, my knowledge of this, and that's why I was asking, I mean, since we are not where we need to at this time or have to, as you said there, I mean, it's good food for thought, for thinking ahead. I mean, unless we've got other information or something else comes up, I'm in the mindset just to ride it for now.
And do you want them then to bid it out within the broker that we currently have?
I mean, if he can find us some better stuff and everything with what you're saying, the way that trend's going to break even and we can figure out some of that other, then, yeah, I don't know why we wouldn't. You know, I mean, is it?
I don't think there's any harm.
Let's step back to the lower season. Old commissioner here. He's been there for six years, what?
Seven.
Seven.
So, I'm sure he.
Okay, six and a half.
So, these are just random comments. So, looking at the big picture in the world of insurance, we typically don't find that we have a lot of options. The marketplace seems to be relatively fixed, if you will, in the number of companies that are writing policies, whether it's personal or business or county government. And so, last year, when we asked our broker to put it out for bid, we had probably three, if I remember right, Linda, we had three different companies that they presented to us. Consideration was given to the current one, which we stayed with. And the other one was close, but there was concern about the service that we would receive from that particular insurance company. Not the, not to be confused with the broker or the agent, but with the company itself. And the difference was relatively minor. And I think one of the considerations that the commission has always been firm on is that if we change to another provider, cost, of course, is always something that we have an obligation to look at. But with that, we also have always felt like we have an obligation to make sure that our current employees are going to have access to current physicians and hospitals so that their level of care would not be interrupted. And I think that's what we encountered, I think, Linda, on that one company last year. It was just uncertain what networks would be available. So, that was, that's always been something that we've taken into consideration. And we would not, I don't believe personally, that we would want to leave an employee midstream with some type of, of, how do I want to say?
Disease.
Disease. Yeah, yeah. So, we've always taken that in consideration. As far as, as far as just the service that we've received from our current broker, this is, will be our third year. I would say the first year was probably, it was new. The broker was new to us, we were new to them. And we also had this, this secondary policy, this, whatever we're calling it, what are we calling? This supplemental plan really didn't work out well. And I think that created a lot of the frustration from within and probably within as well in how that was managed. So, then we went to, so we had two cards. We had our primary card and then we had our supplemental card. And we were probably billed for and paid for some things that were not, that should not have been paid for. So, that created a lot of frustration. But now we're back to one card, the provider, Anthem. I'm not hearing any, and Linda's speak to this at any time, but I'm not hearing of any frustration or concerns that we're experiencing. Everything seems to be.
It's in-house. So, they're not having trouble talking to themselves in part between the two policies.
So, all the coding that's taken place seems to be working well. And so, that's a benefit for us and for our coworkers because they're not receiving statements where they're going to be turned over for collection because the supplemental did not pay for the coverage. So, for all of those reasons, I'm happy to stay where we're at based upon, again, what I just see in the global insurance world. I don't think there's a lot of options out there. And so, the real question, I think, then becomes to us, and this isn't a popular decision, and I'm not suggesting that we make it, but one of the things that determines, I think, usage is who has some ownership or buy-in into it. So, coming from the private sector where I bought major medical plans with real high deductibles and I paid most everything out of pocket. And that's a blessing because there was never anything that would trigger that major medical. And so, that's a blessing. But I did run to the doctor if I had a running nose. And if I didn't feel good, I probably said, okay, maybe a little rest and a little more issues might help, right? So, now we have to balance, I think, that wellness care, which the broker's really working with us. You know, how do we, how do we use the plan and, 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 and look at those preventive services, those annual physicals that we should all get, those annual checkups? How do we balance that against asking the coworker to have a co-pay or part of the premium? So, going back my first year here, I think we had a very humble co-pay twenty dollars or something, maybe. It wasn't a lot. And then we moved away from that and we said, okay, we can pay a hundred percent.
Oh, you mean premium?
Premium.
No, we're not, we've had for a long time a hundred percent paid. I thought you had doctors' visits.
No, I thought the first year here, we had, the first year I was here.
Co-pay would be right, for doctors' visits.
But I thought we had premium too. Okay, anyway. So, then, then the question would be, how do we balance that when you look at benefits in the big picture? So, the benefit becomes, do we continue to pay a hundred percent for health insurance? And what does that look like for a COLA if, in the event, when we get the budget? You know, you have to balance it. So, we're sitting here, this year, it was a million sixty, a million total expenditures expected, a million ninety-six thousand dollars. So, if we, if we do ten percent, you know, next year, we're going to be looking at one point two million, maybe. Maybe not. And then what does that look like then when we go into trying to look at the COLAs? So, I look at health insurance and then I try and put it in the big picture as well. But to summarize, I'm happy where we're at. I think it's working well. I would like the premiums to go down, but I just got my house insurance renewed. And guess what? It's going up another three hundred dollars this year. And I've got my business insurance. And guess what? It went up about, after they reviewed it, it went up over two thousand dollars this year. So, so I know the world that I live in and I don't expect any decrease. That two percent sounds good. It's easier to budget for ten percent, then we start looking at options. But back to the broker, I'm, I think we're working with the broker well now. And sometimes companies come in and they want to buy your business or they, they want to propose an alternative arrangement, if you will, on premiums. And there's some that I would look at, but they would not be popular with our coworkers. And I think we have to keep that in mind as well. So, long story short, I'm happy, I'm happy where we're at.
I would add too, in what you said, seventy-nine hundred dollar deductible is the highest we can go. Because we had tried in that bid to push it up to ten thousand and look at our supplemental because for us, that was potentially a working prospect that we were seeing being good for us. And they came back and told us seventy-nine hundred is as high as you can go to your max. They've got, they've got the process worked out, just like lease and purchase. They have the premium versus supplemental worked out to where they hold the cards. So, that is our max. And with Lake Region, all those, and these are, people came out that said they are now connected with Mayo Clinics. So, for Barnes and Mayo work together a lot. We've had people say that, that their records were transferred because they're connected to Barnes and Mayo. And now, apparently down here local, we have another connection. That, so that may, to one point, you mentioned, the networking of medical providers is being gathered together a little more as we're moving forward. And I think you mentioned it too. So, we're seeing that begin to happen locally also. I don't know, but by one point, it'll matter. But we are, as we're hearing other counties, I forget sometimes when they're talking that they're only bidding one network and they're only bidding, and I'm like, why are you not bidding more? And then it dawns on me, they don't have more than one network.
Right.
Because they only have one network of providers that's accessible to them.
That's right.
Where, as McLean County here, we're surrounded by all of them, basically in Missouri. So, we have a benefit to being able to utilize multiple specialties at multiple places.
Yeah, we're really, we're really at the end of the line in, in being able to, for the most part, being able to impact change on health insurance. This is just being driven from, from the forces within the healthcare industry and the government. And who knows, you know, right now, just, you know, there's talk that a lot of the individual plans in ACA are going to skyrocket this year because the government has so far the credit that people receive is being reduced or eliminated. So, if you're an individual out here and you're, and you're part of the ACA, then you can expect premium increases. And then the other thing, back to reporting, I know Cox, there was a healthcare luncheon here a month or so ago that the Chamber put out. And when you, when you listen to those speakers, you know, Cox, I believe, they're implementing a new system where essentially, whether you go to here, 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 or here, your health record now is all going to be tied together. And so, what's, what's the significance of that? I'm not sure, but there's more information out there that they're going to have available to them that's going to impact us to a limit point. They, they pretty much can look at groups to some extent and compare that with other groups. And they know what profit margin that they're going to, going to need. Now, we, I think, and again, Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that within, if, if it comes back and Anthem is our option, they can give us, usually they'll give us two or three plans to choose from within that Anthem family of plans. So, if there's any tweaking that could be done that might impact the premium a little bit, would be, would we look at prescription drug coverage? Would we look at some of the, some of the co-pays? And that might tweak it a little bit. We did have a little pushback, I think, on the co-pay, the forty-dollar office visit and the eighty-dollar specialty. I think the year before, it was, it was what, thirty and thirty and sixty? Yeah, so some, some of our coworkers felt like that was maybe, you know, they didn't really like that. They had a little bit more co-pay, but we have a very, we have a very good policy that we offer our coworkers here. Very good policy. And, you know, at Road and Bridge, when we had the broker over there and they were answering questions, you know, one of the questions that always comes up, what can we do for family? You know, family plan. And it just becomes so much that it's really almost impossible. But that'd be something I would always want to look at. But that that'd be something I would I would always want to look at. But I haven't seen anything that that we can make work budget-wise. But I think that would help with some, maybe some recruitment and some retention. You know, here, some notes, forty-two individuals used a supplemental, eleven no longer workforce. You know, of course, there's lots of reasons why those eleven aren't here, but, you know, question I asked the our coworker, Roden Bridge, would you be willing to have a little bit of a of a copay and not copay, pay a little bit of the the premium in order for us to think about your your family plan? But this eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-three cents is our total premium. I pay a hundred percent for my spouse on that. A lot of families, you know, young, young coworker, trying to make rent, daycare, and all the other costs of living that they have, that's that's just out of reach for them. And and then the thing gets back to, you know, and if if you wanted to just look at something totally different, you know, would it ever be possible to implement a plan where we could have like a major medical with the HSA element to it? But then bending that curve is is very difficult for for many people. Because would they put the money in the savings in order to pay for those out-of-pocket expenses that they're incurred, have a young family? Or any of us had one major event, you know, they're going to have, they're going to have to come up with quite a bit at one time. So I don't know, we've got a lot of good options, so. Sounds to me like we're good where we're at for this year. Is that kind of what I'm hearing, where we're at, whatever?
Yep.
Just for a point of maybe understanding only. We keep saying, I noticed you were saying it, and I'm like, well, I did too. We keep saying Anthem, but that doesn't, bidding with Anthem doesn't necessarily mean Blue Cross. Because it means Mercy, it means Anthem actually has taken a position, contracted position, with Mercy and other networks to be the bidder. So you're bidding with Anthem, who's bidding the Mercy Network, who's bidding the Blue Cross Network, the Anthem Network itself? So while Anthem is the broker, they are bidding other networks too. Which lends back to that unified knowledge base.
Yeah, and those are out of our control. And and if if taxpayers subsidy through the federal government that triples down is is reduced, then then your role hospitals in particular, if you if you listen to all the news headlines, they and and physicians, they're being compensated less. And then that ultimately impacts our options that we have, you know, that we can continue to have the networks that we do. Or we may get to, like some counties, where they just have one one option, this is this is where you run down. Linda, is there any direction you want?
What I'm gonna do right now is what I, yes or no for brokers? And you're saying leave as it is? Okay, and yes or no to have a broker bid? For the sake of seeing what's out there.
What does that take up on our part if we have a broker to go to and do some bidding? I mean, we have, we have nothing, I mean, other than them looking into it, getting that back information. We have no cost. We have nothing there to do other than give us more stuff to look over if they do find something.
Yeah.
Other than that, they can come back to us and say, well, I've looked for two weeks and.
If he finds something, he'll refer it to you. Yeah.
Right.
So, well, I don't know that it can hurt.
I've never seen it hurt anything.
Yeah. You know, I mean, like you said, we've been with the same broker for three years. You've had it all rebidded last year. So, I mean, I don't think it would hurt anything to have the broker at least to, you know, and I would entertain the idea of having a broker at least looking at some stuff for us, just to see.
It's probably already going to. Probably already going to let them know what's out there.
To a degree, yeah.
That's right, for the most part, and for doing the job, that's correct. It sounds like if we've been comfortable for the last three years, we're probably the same broker, probably doing the job. So same thing, you know, within my own, I got asked yesterday on the job and stuff that I gave a bid for stuff, they end up asking me, are you as cheap as anybody? You know, and I told them, I said, I'm as cheap as I'm going to get. So you're more than welcome to 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 look around, you know? And and then, of course, but yeah, so, but yeah, it never hurts to check.
Okay, that's the direction from the commission then? Okay, all right. Next slide, we're only gender, would be general counties and the business. I just have one item, I'm waiting for Christie to come in. So if you remember, we we have two CDs out there and one of those was due for renewal in July. And so it just popped up in my mind how I would look at. So I asked Christie, and apparently that automatically renewed. And we didn't have any notice on that. And so I've asked Christie to contact the financial institution where that's at. They're willing to let us do whatever we want to do. And Christie should be in here to give us current rates. She's contacted two, she's contacted three, two have given her a quote. The other one has not given her a quote yet. So she's hoping she can get ahold of them this morning to be able to get that and present it to us. So I'd like to leave the meeting open until Christie gets here. And then with that, and Linda, help me out, but if I look at the the budget.
If you'd seen those, you know.
If I if I look at the budget in our capital reserve fund, we, you did put detailed expenditures, you made that available to us if we needed it, right? Okay, so depending what the commission does, if we if we put that back in a CD or not, and if we don't put it back in a CD, we know we have the fixed interest rate that that we're receiving from the bank did, right, two-point-eight or whatever that was. So we know that's our that's our floor on that money until we want to use it. Now, I'm not suggesting we necessarily, I'm not recommending anything at this point. I'm just putting things out for discussion. So, one, we we might hear, let's put that back in a six-month or twelve-month and, you know, hopefully we'll get four or five percent on it. I doubt we'll get five now, probably four, might be closer, maybe, maybe four and a half. Or we 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 cash that CD in and then we have that money available for any special projects that we'd like to do this year because we have budget. Now, in special projects, I'm going to I'm going to ask this, and I don't know if it's too early. And and Linda, as budget officer, help me out here. But if we're looking at any equipment and looking at other elements of the budget, just trying to project out here, is there anything we want to consider? If there's any lead times on this equipment that we may or may not be looking at? And and if there's not lead times, would there be any price changes we should consider? So if there's anything we we're planning to purchase next year, whether it's Roden Bridge, and I want to put in here Sheriff's Vehicles as well, if we look at that, we've always done something out of GR, I think, one of those maybe.
I have one GR, one in Biscayne.
Yeah, and then we've done some. So so I'm I'm just putting things on the table, waiting for Christie to come in. And so that we can.
Potentially keep out some of that and not put it into.
Well, yeah, or, you know, just just know that that this is kind of a pre- a a pre- prelude into the budget really. You know, sales tax, it remains a flat. You know, what the next few months will look like, I don't know. But if we're looking at a at a potential increase in in health insurance, right? And if you look at, and we're probably more familiar with a Roden Bridge budget, if you look at a Roden Bridge budget and you say, okay, this year we put, what was it, two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand or something like that, or or something for for equipment? We know part of that was our final payment, I think. Yeah, so when we make that next, this coming month, there's Christie.
My own time.
Yeah, I stole and Christie.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's.
You're just not, you're not in Washington yet.
Yeah, I was. What you got for us?
Okay, so it renewed at two-point-three-five.
Good grief.
For twelve months.
Okay.
Their sixth month at first date right now is a two-point-two-five. Okay, so Commerce, there, I didn't know exactly what, how many months you actually wanted. Their sixth month is four.
Okay.
And I I didn't know if you wanted less or more.
This one, we've been leaving it six months, but did they have another option?
They have, yeah, he gave me one through nine months.
Okay, is any better interest rate than the four on any of those?
A one month is four-point-two-five, but a three month is four-point-one-nine.
Okay, three month, okay then, okay.
We are currently getting, because you had asked about just putting it in the bank at Heritage, and we do get the fix at two-point-eight is what we get at Heritage for fixed. So then I've talked to Lance at Heritage and he said, I'm just going to read you his email. And he said, would you be willing for us to place the CD in our CDARS product? This would allow us to use the cash rather than having to use it to purchase bonds and then pledge those bonds against the account. He said he can provide us more information. He said, essentially, we'll place those funds in other banks so that the county will get the full fee, full FIDC coverage on them. And then when we get funds in return that they can use also, instead of just holding it. And he said with that, with the SEDAR's product, where it can be higher on rates. So with it, a three month, if we do it through the CDARS, would be three-point-eight-seven-five. Three-point-seven-five for six months and three-point-six-two-five for nine months. And he said if we do it, just as a normal CD without that, they would be reduced by point-two-five percent. So it would be three-point-six-two-five for the three months and then three and a half for six months and then three-point-three-seven-five for nine months.
And let's see, Christie, that was seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand and and the interest, does it pay out or does it just stay with the CD until we make a decision?
It stays with the CD.
Okay, so what have we earned on that, you know?
Uh, we, I can go pull the number.
It's gonna be about fourteen or fifteen thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
Was that when the one where the flex where we could pull it out without anything?
Uh, it was, no, I don't think so.
I think it was six.
It was a twelve month, it was a twelve-month CD.
It was the last summer.
It was a twelve-month last summer. And then it's kind of on me, I never received paperwork on it to remind me.
Bank switches.
Well, that it was up and, because it said a twelve-month plus one. So then I was thinking, oh, it was a thirteen-month. But I guess the plus one was where we could have went in and changed it at some point. And then we did switch banks in the middle, right when it was changing. And so it was on me, I forgot. So they just automatically renewed it, which which we never did get paperwork on it at all to remind me either. But so they renewed it automatically since we didn't contact them, so. And it did renew in July.
But it's my understanding, conversation you and I had, that the current institute, financial institution, is willing to waive any and all, all fees, fees or penalties if we withdraw this.
Yeah, that's the way I took it. Because when she said that she would talk to Travis about it and then see, and she didn't say anything when I altered, because I juxtaposed it with her.
Okay, so, okay. Well, that gives us the information we need to continue our discussion here then. And I would say to you, more than likely, Christie will be moving it.
Well, after I saw the rates, I was like, even if the rates would be worth it just to put it back into the normal checking account, then leave it in the CD there. Because we would be getting more just in the normal.
That's right.
It'd be, you know, we'll get to move it no matter what. I don't know where you guys want to do, what you want to do with it, but.
Well, it looks to me like we've got two options. Looks like Commerce has provided the best rate. Or we move it into checking and that looks to me like the the options. I mean, we'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Christie.
Thank you, Chris.
So let's continue that discussion then. If we if we put it back in a in a CD, if we go, really wouldn't make any difference because if we budget for it like we did this year, we could make the money available for next year's.
So do you know more about that? Over and?
I I know just enough to be dangerous. And this is from a conversation with a local school board that has used those types. And it probably wasn't as seamless as they believed it was. And that's that's enough to say to be dangerous about it.
Okay, three months would tie us up into next year's budget, that's what I'm saying.
But we did the same thing because we could put that in special projects for next year and it becomes, it becomes, let's see.
February, March first, you have availability to that money on the six months.
Yeah, so I'm in, I'm in either for six months or or putting it into the checking account at two-point-eight with a plan, with a plan. And the plan would be to really look at the need for equipment in lead times. But without a plan, then I would, I would, my vote would be to put it in a six-month CD.
So I guess the first question I would ask is, do we feel like there would be something before March first that we would need to put some money down on?
Well, let let me let me roll the calendar back then. Because typically, what we found, if we if we would opt to use this for a a sheriff's vehicle as opposed from GR, then I believe it's usually the October timeframe that they open those up from the vehicle manufacturers for us to order. Okay, last year they came in pretty quick, but we ordered in October and I think we got them in December maybe. Okay, so I can't think of a need for that between now and. Okay, uh, so I can't think of a need for that between now and March, other than if we, if, if we, if we do it now, if we wait till March, then, you know, do we miss that window to order those? I don't know, that, that's something we need to find out. And then the other thing is, uh, Rowan Bridge, I've seen some quotes coming through, uh, from our Rowan Bridge foreman, and if we're gonna do anything there, then, uh, what's the lead time on some of that? And would, would we want any of that equipment before March of next, of next year? And if, if we're going to, if, if there's a need and a plan, or a plan and need, then, uh, and, and it's available to us, then why wait till March necessarily, or even January when we get to budget? Although we'll have a better picture of what the budget looks like, but, um, so...
I was gonna say, and budget comes in January, so that participates in what we're talking, discussing too.
Correct, yeah. So with that, though, we have that, uh, no, it's getting paid for in...
Next month.
Okay, it's gonna say September, it pays that.
And then that's final?
Yeah, and that would be the final. So that would be out of there, so that would free up a little bit of extra from there, correct?
From Rowan Bridge.
Mm-hmm, so that potentially, if everything remained the same budget-wise, then you could put that roughly a hundred and thirty-five thousand towards equipment purchases in the twenty-six budget. But then what does that look like with, again, where we need to be thinking right now? We've got our new Rowan Bridge foreman, we need to be giving thought to, okay, it's never too soon to start planning for next year. So, you know, would we increase our rock budget? If we increase our rock budget, what does that mean? If we increase, if we have any, uh, asphalt programs next year, what does that mean? If our insurance premium goes up next year, what does that mean for, for the budget? So, um, I think I would recommend probably in the next thirty days, or sooner, that we have a work-study session where we start really planning out next year Rowan Bridge, and that's gonna help us decide part of what this equipment's gonna, gonna look like.
Yes. Yeah, we need to do something there, like you said, we're coming on person, any other equipment or anything there, utilize this money, or interest from, or any of that. We need to have that figured out before we get halfway through the fourth quarter, for sure. By the end of the third, we need to have something going that direction. That way we can plan ahead, uh, and know kind of where we're at, what we've got. Move forward with, cause I do see one, one, maybe two items that would be beneficial to us before the end of the year, or the first of next, or even March one, as you're saying. You know, so, um, so yeah, I agree with that, that we need to probably do something there. Or the work-study, kind of see some things. But I'm still kind of in the mindset, going back to what brought this on, is the CDs and stuff like that, that...
I don't see that if we, so, so, so then the option still comes back to putting it in the checking account or six month. If we put it in six month, then we're not going to have access to that capital until, till March. Wrong?
But, no, that's a true statement, but we have budget.
Which I was going to.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we don't have budget to buy now, if we, if, if we didn't have this available to us now, then we wouldn't possibly be able to buy some equipment now. We do have it budgeted that we can under special projects.
No, I think it, it's still available.
Could still be available?
Yeah.
At any time? You wanna write that down and initial that for me?
We've got more than one.
Energy board, Jack, thank you.
I'm all that, I want to, this is being thrown at me at this moment, so I'll just, I want to think this one through just a little bit. But, yes, yeah, I do think it would be available to you.
Even putting this in a six month CD?
Yeah.
How?
Because you're not spending it.
No, we might be spending it. We might be buying some...
But the CD is not spent, it's not an expenditure, it's just holding it in another account.
Where you can write the check from.
I'm not.
We are.
Because we're holding it. We're gonna write the check from there. If you, if you actually make it a purchase, you're gonna write it from there. If we're holding the money and drawing on another account, it's just a matter of where the funds are sitting.
Okay.
So that's not an expenditure.
But that goes back to, if it's six month though, is it available?
It's available.
To write a check?
That is available.
But that, but that, I'm probably wrong. That, that's available irregardless of the CD?
Correct.
Okay.
Because the CD is a matter of placement of your cash.
Okay.
It's not a true expenditure, it's a placement of your cash balance.
So, so that and that are not connected?
They are not connected in expenditure lines. It's a placement, a CD is a place, where you place your account, cash.
I, I understand it, so...
So it's not an expenditure.
So let me ask that a different way.
It affects your front page?
That's one more, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to the front page, yeah, okay.
But it doesn't affect your expenditure line?
Okay, but, but I don't have that seven hundred and fifty thousand, do I? Unless I cash it in?
Yeah. Cause he was planning on that being all issued?
Right.
So it's already out of your cash?
So what?
It's already planned to be out of your cash.
So then my...
Working cash.
Okay, so that would leave us how much in capital improvement then?
That, if you spend it all.
No, that includes the million dollar CD.
I'm saying if all that is unavailable.
Okay.
Spent, yeah, and available, then you would have the two hundred and ninety-four thousand.
If Linda can write the check if we need it, then we put it in a six month CD?
Yeah, that's where I'm at. That's what I was getting at.
And you're, you're good with that?
With that six month?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the direction we'll give Christie then, and then, uh, and if that, and, and then we bring you invoices for...
I don't really, it's tied up until when?
Uh, February, I think, and then January or February.
I know, it's spring, I can remember.
Yeah.
Does it say in there?
But I think it was, um, Joe, I think you made the motion on that.
That was your memory.
That was in January or February that we put that, that, uh, million back in, cause I know we had a discussion if we was gonna put all the interest back in. I think we put in a million twenty-five.
Yeah, we saved some of that interest out, put it back into our GR, and put the remaining flex, put the interest in apps, yes. I believe that's correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, then that's really all I had for general county business. I will, uh, let Christie know that we'd like to move that to, um, into a six month CD at that highest rate that we reported.
So what do you think about the interest?
I just, I just moved, I just moved, I just moved.
I think so too, at this point, take that extra fourteen to sixteen, whatever it was, I don't remember what. I don't think she had it there, we just kind of went on a guesstimation there, quick thoughts. Move the whole thing at this point of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Into the four percent.
So is that in the form of a...
Into the four percent rate, what you're saying?
I agree.
Yeah, I would make a, I would make a motion to move into a six month CD for Commerce Bank at four percent for all of the CD with the interest.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion second to, um, for a six month CD for the amount of the principal plus accrued interest, uh, at Commerce Bank. Any further discussions? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side, motion. All right, general county business, did you have a chance? Oh, we're still in general county business. Well, let me ask you this, uh, we still are in general county business. Yeah, all right, Linda's, Linda's not done yet.
Well, it is a topic for next year. So what I did is ran the state's mileage that they have out there, and they already projected into their, well, they projected this year, actually, but they're assuming that the twenty-six year is gonna be the same as it's been for the last two years at this time, which is subject to change. But, um, I am just bringing this up in that if we were to change our reimbursement rate, which is forty-nine cents accounted currently, and it's been that way for three, four years?
Yeah.
Now would be a time to begin to look at that and decide what it's gonna be, because we will need a budget. Office holders and all of us would need a budget for reimbursements within our own budgets when people request that reimbursement rate. And as people are driving their own personal cars or anything, there is a there's a reason ability to request something that I think is closer. And I wouldn't even take off the idea of meal reimbursements. It is tough to find meals, um, when you're committing to a place to be high note. But, you know, McDonald's isn't everywhere, it's so expensive.
And they are reducing some of their, they are reducing some...
Happy meals, so...
And they say more adults are purchasing happy meals.
Well, one year... It's cause they have our reimbursements. Uh, but it, it's Mike's seeing it, she's seeing that she's disallowing prices that are fixed. Do you go out and...
You're, you're saying fixed there stuff, that kind of brought up to me, and how does that, if I'm not, you know, of course, I, I'm not that familiar with all that reimbursement stuff and everything, cause I'm one of those, if I'm out there, I, I get that. So do we have something set there towards only at certain places, or up to a certain dollar amount, or what?
We can get it.
Which party?
Both, it's an actual with ticket and a per diem, it has both.
Okay.
And we can look at that, this is, as we're talking budgets, this was another one of those bringing up. It's like, where, do we wanna look at, does it stay, or is there an increase? Because if there's an increase, we need to begin to work that towards next year's budget. Is forty-nine cents a mile enough still, or in doing county business on a personal vehicle, or does it need to be looked at a little more so? Do you wanna do mileage only and hold off on the food, or does the food? And what I, what I'm saying is, you may be at a conference or whatever, and they say, okay, meals are fourteen fifty per plate. Well, you either pay that, or you don't. I mean, you have options, and you don't eat, because you're gonna start, or you're gonna be eating while they're talking, or whatever else may be going on. So that's why I'm saying some of the prices are fixed, whenever you go to places, you're just fixed with whatever it may be. So that's where Mike sees that, people aren't getting reimbursed fully sometimes for what they're doing. But no decisions needed today.
I think, Linda, just for information purposes only, uh, when we, when, when we bring this back up, if you could, if you could, um, maybe get us what we did last year.
Sure.
Uh, total for last year, and maybe where we're at this year.
On mileage and trainings?
Yeah, mileage and, uh, and mileage and train meals, yeah. And that way we'll know what our, what our twenty-four year was like.
Okay.
We can look at twenty-five, and then, and then we can say, okay, if we increase this, we can anticipate this, this impact on our budget, probably minimal, you know?
The thing that you won't see unless we go back to the tickets is, it's disallowed, so we're not paying more.
No, I, I understand that, but if we, if we increased, you know, it would, it would be hard to know.
Yeah.
But, but if we increased a dollar for breakfast or lunch, or whatever it might be, and two dollars for dinner, or whatever it might be.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know, that, that is probably pretty hard to extract, but, but maybe we'd have a good basis to make a better guess.
Yeah. And we'll have reimbursement sheet, if you guys have, I'll get my... That's it, that's all I have.
Okay, public, or, excuse me, still general county business?
Seven CDTs are still out.
Seven CDs, that's what I'm following, okay. Anything, Joe?
There really is.
I'll just make an anecdotal comment, after our last meeting, we, we did do a tour of the jail, uh, excuse me, the sheriff, uh, remodel down there, and, uh, I can tell you that on a sub- on a subsequent visit, um, it was very much appreciated. Very much appreciated that, uh, that the interest was shown in, in what was, was going on, yeah.
So bad.
Okay, public comments, I didn't list it on the agenda.
Was the driveway policy gonna be on the county's website somewhere?
Sure.
I didn't know if it was gonna be on Linda's website, or where it was gonna be.
You know, that's a good question, I, I believe we'd probably post it under Rowan Bridge. Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll push it out there, and, yeah.
That's all I had.
Yeah, okay, now we'll go to routine business, if everybody had a chance to see the county's paper, okay? Yeah, all right. And then I've seen on the sheriff's report here, uh, now we're just getting, uh...
Well, that's only a piece of the, yeah.
Okay.
What happened was, was Quicken, the price of Quicken has gone up, and they decided not to participate with that price increase, so they're doing it differently on those funds, yeah.
Uh, back to general county business, um, the Atlanta Bridge, there will be a semi-final inspection there tomorrow at ten. Jared's already aware of it. I will probably go down there, uh, but if not, one of us should be there. So do you, you have plans for tomorrow at ten, and that would be at, at the bridge at ten o'clock on the Atlanta?
I would mind if I made that, but I, I would love to make it myself.
And I, I just knew about that late, late Friday, so...
Um, let me do a little bit of checking.
Okay.
I very well might be able to swing that time slot, so...
Jared is aware of it.
Okay.
And he would like, he hasn't been able to meet, uh, the engineering company yet. So Jared is aware of it. So Jared is aware of it. He, he will be there, so he can repres, will represent the county if none of us are able to make it.
Okay.
I plan on being there, but but one of us, one of us should, should be there.
All right. I won't be, so.
Final inspection tomorrow at ten?
Semi-final.
Semi.
Yeah, don't know what semi-final is, you know, just, you know, hey, this is your walkthrough, this is our checklist, is there anything else? So a MODOT will be there, our engineering company will be there. And, um, the contractor obviously will be there and, and, um, everybody will walk through and.
Basically, they're not saying it's complete, so if they want you to be out there to do a pre-job list is what it is.
Which side are they going to be on?
Good, good question, but I assume that, uh, either one, you're going to be able to get up to the, to the bridge. You may not, you may have to back off.
We're taking things down.
Yeah. Okay, public comments, uh, I haven't found listed on the agenda, not seen none. Okay, final call, other, other business? Joe, I've got one road and bridge that came up that I'll get with you afterwards, if you don't care.
Yeah.
Actually, two, Eric, I don't think I have any for you.
I've got one, left you at least binge your ear to and see if you can write the notes.
All right.
What is that?
Everything good out on Road and Bridge? Looks like the guy's busy. I rode around with Jared last week on the asphalt patching. And, um, I was, I was pleased with the, with his recommendations. So far, there would probably be, um, based upon that trip, probably forty, forty loads that he would already want to plan out. I think he told me it's about, um, he told me it's about eleven hundred dollars a load, maybe something like that. Maybe he gave me a tonnage price, but I think it's about eleven hundred. So we'd be under fifty thousand. We budgeted a hundred and, and nine.
Yeah.
And I haven't been on the east side yet, Eric. We hope to get that done this week. And I think the reason why I've taken this upon myself at this point, and anyone's welcome, is just I have the notes from a couple of years ago. And when we get into our work study session, then I would like to develop that, that long-term plan for a couple of these roads. That are going to need some, some attention.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. And I don't, is there any on the east side? I mean, we, we went and looked at, as far as, and I'll, every one on the list, every road on the list on the west side, we'll do the same on the east side. Is there any one particular that you're getting any calls or feedback on that?
I would say no on that. Nobody has expressed anything they serve for me.
Correct.
About a particular
Correct.
road that's already paved.
Correct.
I don't, I have a lot of them. The only one, uh, and I need to go get on it and look at it, and the two of you will. But the last time I was called it, which was a couple of years ago, Ranch Drive, maybe to be looked at, all about.
Yeah, that was the one that when we, when we did that, we had some, some concern that with it being a very narrow road, kind of flat
Yeah.
and shaded, what that would look like long-term. But I haven't heard anything.
I haven't either, and I have, uh, two or three regulars that come in, that would not be afraid to speak up if they felt it was a problem, so.
Correct.
And if, you know, I'm going to leave it to, well, I'm not going to leave it to, but I would like for Jared to and you to go drive it again. So we can kind of make a, find a thought on, on what might need to happen there.
I hope she's in there. Who bought? Do you, do you need one? Do you need? No, we can, we each one.
So down there at the bottom, that's what we, what we reimburse.
So if you provide a receipt, you can get thirty-eight, if you don't, you can get twenty-six, is what I'm seeing there.
It's per, but yeah.
Yeah.
And you can get a hundred dollars for, um, trying to be received, so you get thirty-eight dollars back.
Cap?
Yeah.
And Linda, when were the last time those were adjusted? I don't recall a change being made in seven years.
Nine, probably.
Nine, okay.
I think it was a couple of years before you came in, that's what was going on.
Any, our next agenda, uh, if you have anything you'd like to put on there, I'll put back on CDT applications just in preparation or anticipation. Then we also have our department, uh, head meetings. Now, that might be a good day if you wanted to make it a longer day, and I don't know if you do or not, but, uh, our Road and Bridge foreman would be here. And we could, uh, if that gives us enough time, or if you want to do that at a later date, I'm just tossing that out there for planning, for your planning purposes.
I could be good and swayed either way. It would be nice to know now or soon from now, if we are.
I'm just, I'm, I'm putting it out there so, so that plans can be, can be made. I'm not fixed on that day, I'm just putting it out there.
What day was that, wasn't it?
Tuesday, September second. I'm tentatively going to kind of work that, or maybe I could be here until two or three o'clock.
Um, I'm, I'm good either, either way, Joe.
So you're saying commissions and then go straight into work stage shortly after, is that what?
That, I'm just putting it out there since we, we would be here, it wouldn't interrupt another day. And Jared would be here and he could, uh, and we give him enough notice that, hey Jared, we need, we need to start bringing your, your, uh, your thoughts to us. And, and this won't be one and done, this will be the first one of probably two or three or four that we'll have. But maybe we can start to iron out again, like the, the equipment. Maybe that would be a, a priority.
Yep, I'll work, we'll do it.
Okay, so we'll do that. So I nearly forgot this. On the September ninth meeting, our next Tuesday, Mayor Mack Regional Planning Commission is having a, a, uh, a informational gathering, uh, from county officials, city leadership, realtors, and it's a study they're putting together for the Fort Leonard Wood region, which were, is part of that four county region that we're part of, the Sustainable Ozarks Partnership. And it's a, it's a housing study that's at ten o'clock. So, uh, I, I will be there and I would encourage both of you that morning, it, it'd be about an hour. And they're gathering information on what, uh, what the, uh, region needs for housing. And I think this would be a good, and that's Tuesday, the ninth, at ten o'clock.
And location?
City Council, Chambers, City Hall, Chambers, yeah. And we could move from here right on over to there maybe, and, uh, and it won't last more than an hour.
Okay, I've got a one thirty, so I wouldn't should interfere at all.
No, and it can't last for more than an hour because there's other meetings taking place in the chamber.
Okay.
September twenty-second, just as we're getting into September. October, correct, thank you. October twenty-second. Sunshine Mall Workshop is going to be held in the OEM training room.
What workshop?
Sunshine Mall.
Sunshine.
It's from ten to noon. And we are opening it up to anyone who would like to attend. We got the flyer finished yesterday and I'm going to send it out to our office holders and our office holders can send it out to other counties. If they would like to drive and join your association, regional association, if you wanted to. And we're sent to the city, I'm also.
So I said OEM, OEM provides some matches others?
We need to put on.
I'm not, no, I'm not, I was, I'm not a little.
Are you open to bring your own recommendations?
I'll let my city go.
Here you go.
Okay, is there anything else to come before the commission's formal? If not, Joe, I've got that one.
Yep.
And then one that, uh, so I've got two, one's a brush cutting and I don't know whether it's hours or not. And the other is just information on a road that Jared asked me about.
No, perfect. Must stand adjourned?
Will stand adjourned.